Oh, I don't, because I don't, I just only see five people on there, yeah.
Um, Mr. Rivera would have to tell us exactly how many people are on, but um, I believe that the actual link with, went out with the advertisement and it was on the city's web.
Yeah, okay.
Good evening, uh, council president and vice president. Uh, currently, we have twenty-six people and the adverti- and the link is on the website and uh, has been on the website when the advertisement went out.
Thank you.
Twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, twenty-eight people now.
You need me, you can, you can come in.
And one.
Anything?
Okay, yeah.
Twenty-nine.
Joey, there are people at the meeting.
There are people where?
A few people are logged into the other meeting as well, although that link is dead, but there's.
Could, um, could, um, Mr. Rivera go there and uh, share the link, share this link with them?
I will do that, yes.
Alrighty, and I'm gonna, um, I need to move forward with the meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is being called to order. If you would please, um, put your cell phones on silent and mute your mics. Um, during the public uh, portion of this meeting, you will have the opportunity to speak. Again, this meeting is being called to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Over Public Meetings Act Pursuant to Public Laws nineteen seventy-five, Chapter two thirty-one. This agenda is complete to the extent known as was sent to the Trenton Times, posted on the Facebook bulletin board in the city hall, filed in the city clerk's office and posted on the city of Trenton's website. Formal action will be taken. Um, I will call the roll for the council and Mr. Cruz, I would just ask, ask that uh, you just acknowledge that your directors are here.
Um, yes, Madam President.
Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson? Present. Councilman Harrison? Councilman Harrison, Joseph Harrison? Councilman Mewshaw?
Present.
Council, Councilwoman, Councilman Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Councilman Harrison.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vaughn? Councilwoman Wilkins? Councilwoman Wilkins? Councilwoman Vaughn, you're here.
Uh, yes, Council President.
Yes, Council, Councilwoman Wilkins, she spoke a minute ago. I hope she's not in the other meeting. I'll just, uh, if you could just give me a second to make sure that she's not. Okay, alrighty. So, um, I'm asking, um, Mr. Cruz, if you would acknowledge that all of your directors are here?
Uh, Madam President, we are present.
Alrighty, thank you. This evening, um, uh, uh, Lourdes Rodriguez will be, um, uh, sitting in as acting, uh, clerk. Mr. Bridges, would you uh, read the resolution off for Mrs. Rodriguez? Mr. Bridges, if you could unmute yourself.
Bear with me, what's that, Council President?
Mr. Bridges, could you read the resolution off for?
Trying to locate it, I'm, I'm, bear with me, I'm going through a lot of resolutions that he did last second, hold on just.
Please mute yourself if you're not a part of the legislative body. Mister, Mister Rivera?
That's not it. That is not it. That's not it.
Council President, which resolution were the, I'm sorry?
We're looking for, uh, yeah, yeah, you need to, they need to be silenced in this meeting. Um, we're looking for the resolution to, uh, let notice in this evening as, um, acting, uh, acting clerk.
Okay.
Council President, I'm, I'm trying to locate that. It was, it was, I, I thought it was typed up here. I have folks in the office that are gonna bring it down to me. Um, if you could just bear with me one more minute, I do apologize.
Yes, in the, in the meantime, while we're waiting, um, to, uh, for Mr. Bridges to get that done, I was just gonna go over some housekeeping items, but I think I better wait until we read that resolution, um, into the record. Because Ms. Rodriguez will be the one that's doing the recording and we need to read that into the record. Mr. Klosey, are you on?
Council President. Council President, I have the wording here. I don't have to put up on the screen, but with your permission, I, I can read it into the record.
Yes, read it into the record and then the council will, um, will, um, cast your votes.
Uh, yeah, it's caption of resolution, appointing acting municipal clerk in the office of city clerk for the city of Trenton for the date of today's date. Reads, whereas the city of Trenton is in the process of seeking qualified candidates to fill the city clerk, uh, the position of municipal clerk. Whereas it's necessary that the city retain the services of a qualified individual to serve as acting municipal clerk to an interim basis. And whereas pursuant to NJSA forty-eight colon nine dash two three three, the governing body can appoint a person who does not hold a registered municipal clerk certificate to serve as acting municipal clerk for this day, which may not be, which may be extended with the approval of the Director of Division of Local Government Services and Department of Community Affairs. And whereas the city council for the city of Trenton has determined that Lordless E. Rodriguez, um, is qualified to fit and assume and discharge duties and responsibilities of acting municipal clerk. Now therefore be resolved by the city council of the city of Trenton that Lordis E. Rodriguez, um, is hereby appointed to serve as acting municipal clerk for the purposes of conducting the meeting dated Thursday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
No, today is March, um, March the third, it's okay.
Cause I'm looking, I'm looking at the screen, March the third, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Wrong agenda on there, yeah. Yeah, on the screen. Right.
It's, yes, the, that went over on Tuesday, that is good, I, is what we are, um, presiding over today.
Alrighty, so, um, are we ready for the votes? Thank you. Second. Second by just, uh, Councilman Harrison, um, uh, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Mewshaw?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
And, um, Council, uh, woman McBride myself is a yes.
Councilwoman, we have the wrong agenda on the screen. We have February seventeenth agenda.
Yeah, um, they never, uh, took that out. Mister, Mister, uh, Rivera, if you can move that wording up because it is displaying the wrong date. Okay, that would be good.
Agenda, they, they had the other one up before.
Alright. We have to go, we have to go back.
This is the wrong, this is the wrong one.
Councilwoman? We're, um, we're gonna move down to the, um, to the, uh, excuse me, let me just thank Lourdes for coming on this evening. Thank you so much, Lourdes, if you want to unmute yourself to do the, um, the fa- flag salute, um, I could do the, uh, the, the, the prayer, if you want them to do, uh, the flag salute.
Okay. Okay, please, um, the flag is right behind me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And, um, we could do the, this is, yeah, for minimal notes, and we could do the, uh,
invocation.
Yeah, yeah, what I'm trying to look for. Please. We could do the invocation silently.
Council President, would you like me to, to read that?
If, if you would like to read the oath, but they could have did it silently too.
Wait, are, okay, silence works for me.
Alright, mm-hmm, that's fine. So ladies and gentlemen, the, the first order of business is to do some housekeeping items. Um, the, um, we want to put up on the screen, um, if Mister, uh, if Mister, who's, who's running the screen, Mister Rivera or Mister Harris?
Mister Rivera, Council President.
Okay, so the first, um, housekeeping items are the ordinances that have been passed and have already been signed is twenty-one dash oh thirty-one, twenty-one dash oh thirty-two. And the resolutions that have been passed are twenty-two dash oh thirty-nine, twenty-two dash zero four zero, twenty-two dash oh forty-one, twenty-two dash oh forty-two. And the administration is removing, uh, twenty-two dash oh eighty-three. And the executive session will also, uh, twenty-two dash oh thirty-nine will also be removed. So we can move straight into the, um, the consent agenda. Cause this is just the night that we're gonna cast the vote. We've had the conference session for this on the fifteenth of February.
Council President, if I may, uh, administration is also pulling twenty-two dash zero four nine.
Twenty-two dash zero four nine, okay, hold on, let me pull that up.
Council President, zero two four, zero four nine is already pulled for the next meeting. That was already pulled when we had that Tuesday meeting.
Alrighty, so noted that, um, twenty-two dash zero four nine been pulled, and so we can go through the consent agenda, Lourdes, do you have the consent agenda ready?
Yes, I have the, um, consent agenda. Okay. Consent agenda is for resolutions number twenty-two dash zero five zero, twenty-two dash zero five one, twenty-two dash zero five seven, twenty-two dash zero six seven, twenty-two dash zero six eight, twenty-two dash zero seventy, twenty-two dash zero seventy-one, twenty-two dash zero seventy-two, twenty-two dash zero seventy-three, twenty-two dash zero seventy-four, twenty-two dash zero seventy-six, twenty-two dash zero seventy-seven, twenty-two dash zero seventy-nine, twenty-two dash zero eighty, twenty-two dash zero eighty-one, twenty-two dash zero eighty-two, and twenty-two dash zero eighty-four.
Still no, yes, um, we'll call the roll for the vote.
Okay, is there a first? A move?
Yes, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, okay, roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Joe Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman George Mewshaw?
Yes.
Councilman Santiago Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sonia Wilkins?
Yes.
And Council President Kathy McBride?
Yes.
So all those resolutions pass.
To the roll call?
Okay. The first roll call is Resolution twenty-two dash zero forty-five. A resolution directing the office of the city clerk to provide for the procurement of a qualified executive search firm in compliance with the local public contract law to assist the Trenton City Council in the hiring of an executive director for the city of Trenton redevelopment agency. Is there a move? A second?
A second.
On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Uh, Council, excuse me, but the, the ordinance, this is the wrong, um, legis- piece of legislation is on the screen.
This is Resolution twenty-two zero forty-five.
Okay, yep.
A resolution directing the office of the city clerk to provide for the procurement of a qualified executive search firm in compliance with the local public contracts law.
Yeah, but that was not what was on the screen. Whoever is operating the screen, who's operating the screen?
Mister Rivera, it's up, it's up here now.
Please keep up, Mister Rivera, please keep up.
Okay, Councilman, um, Mewshaw?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sonia Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President Kathy McBride?
Yes.
Okay, this resolution pass. Next on roll call is Resolution twenty-two zero forty-six. It's resolution authorizing the city of Trenton, County of Mercer, New Jersey in the acceptance and settling forth minimum conditions of the memorandum of understanding in the receipt of twenty twenty-one transitional year capital city aid in the amount of ten million.
Yes, is it gonna move first?
Second.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, um, I was under the understanding that we had tabled this because we had a, a couple of, um, takeaways, uh, on, you know, um, assigned to, uh, council attorney, uh, um, at Klosey as well as, um, uh, the business admini- a, a business administrator. There was some concern as to, uh, the terms of the MOU as well as the capitals, a receipt of the capital city aid, the statutory, uh, funding that the state gives the city, and the actual transitional aid. And, uh, I just wanted to get a status from, uh, Mister Klosey as to, um, what was uncovered.
Mister Klosey?
Uh, Councilwoman Vaughn raised an issue which turned out to be, uh, correct on its face that in two thousand nineteen, a statute was passed recreating the Trenton Capital City Aid Program. Um, I reviewed this matter today in some detail and the question arose that the statute makes no reference to the need for a memorandum of understanding. So what is the source of the contention that a memorandum of understanding is required? I understand it's been referenced in the state budget, but, you know, I mean, it's an issue that she raised and it's certainly an issue that if council directs, I will be happy to look into that this is tabled for the next meeting.
Yes, um, Councilwoman Vaughn, do you want to table this?
Uh, yes, Council President, I would like to do that. I would move to table.
Second. Three seconds.
Okay, roll call to table Resolution twenty-two dash forty-six. Robin Vaughn, um, first and Councilman Rodriguez, second. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Joseph Harrison?
No.
Councilman George Mewshaw?
No.
Councilman Santiago Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sonia Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President Kathy McBride?
Yes.
Okay, this is tabled to the next meeting.
That will be March the fifteenth? Is, are you tabling it to the next meeting or till you get your information? Councilwoman Vaughn?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, until we get the information.
Alrighty, so the note should read until, um, the council, uh, gets the, um, the correct information for this particular, um, resolution.
Okay, this is table until the council receives their requested information.
Yes.
Next resolution per roll call is Resolution twenty-two zero forty-seven. Resolution establishing a city cannabis advisory committee appointed by Trenton City Council person to one forty-six dash twenty of the city of Trenton code.
Uh, Council President?
Yes, so you move.
Okay, roll call.
Why it's on here because I had.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes, um, sorry about that. Um, I, I, I'm just curious as to why this is on here this evening because it was, uh, tabled. It was successfully tabled last time, depending on, uh, pending certain, uh, issues and further research required and further legal review. And, um, uh, I, although I did receive something back from, uh, Law Director Bridges, but, uh, I, 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 I didn't receive it in a timely manner. I received it late last night. Um, and after reviewing it, it, it still didn't, um, uh, have, it had a lot of, uh, questions that were concerning. And I had reached out to, uh, Council Attorney Klosey to try to, um, work with Mister Bridges to refine the piece of legislation. So I would want this, this, uh, resolution to continue to remain table as it was last time.
Thank you. Thank you. If the, if the resolution, um, was tabled by Miss, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn, it cannot be presented until, um, to her, um, requirements, um, until her information, uh, is satisfied. So this ordinance twenty-two dash zero four seven will remain tabled. Um, um, Ms. Rodriguez, you may move on.
Okay, next is Resolution twenty-two dash forty-eight. Resolution awarding a contractor affair in open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen forty-four A dash twenty point four exec to Solder, Shabazz, and Woodbridge Law Group LLC to provide professional legal services regarding workers' compensation defense for the city of Trenton for a period of one year from time of award in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty thousand dollars at an hourly rate of one hundred and fifty.
Um, Council President?
Yes, you wanna let it come to a motion before you make your comment, Councilwoman?
Okay.
I need a motion on the floor.
So move?
Second.
Um, my comment was that there was no, the contract date was not in that resolution.
Council President, if I may?
Yes, go right ahead, Mister Bridges.
Um, if I may, um, ask for the council's, um, ability to amend this on the floor to provide the one-year contract beginning this fiscal year, January one, twenty twenty-two, to the end of the year.
Alrighty, um, Mister Bridges, will you make the, um, will you add those, um, amendments into this resolution tomorrow? Um, so that they may be signed, so that this resolution may be signed?
Yes, I will.
So you're adding the date, and the date that you're adding is from?
January one, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first.
Okay. Okay, roll call on, on Resolution twenty twenty, I mean, twenty twenty-two dash zero forty-eight, zero forty-eight, with the amendments of the date for January the first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Mewshaw?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution pass. Next resolution on roll call is twenty-two zero fifty. A resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Malley Givens Counselors at Law to provide professional legal services for the Trenton Ethics Board through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen forty-four A dash twenty point five exec for a period of one year from January first, twenty twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two in an amount not to exceed twenty-five thousand.
That's not what twenty fifty says on my.
It's twenty, it's on this, on this agenda, um, Ms. Rodriguez is twenty-two dash zero five two.
I'm sorry, it is tw- um, twenty zero five two. Is there a move?
Yeah, uh, so move, I don't know.
Second, second.
Okay, um, so, so this particular resolution here has, they have already been, uh, given the twenty-five thousand dollars on a previous resolution to complete the work for the ethics board. And this will be a dou- this will be double dipping, and there's no way that they should be coming back for twenty-five thousand more when the resolution that was put forth back in, in May, I believe, covered the, uh, covered the, uh, ethics board. So, this really shouldn't be here. Um, that's it for me. Um, you may ca- you may move for the vote, uh, Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay, roll call, Resolution twenty-two zero fifty-two, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson? Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
No.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Mueschel?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President Kathy McBride?
No.
This resolution failed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-053. Resolution authorizing the payment of $150,000 to the Law Office of Inglisino Webster Weisingkawa and Taylor LLC for services rendered for general municipal litigation and other legal matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944A-20.5 exec. Is there a motion to move?
Second. Again.
Okay, on roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Mueschel?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is 22-054. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Inglisino Webster Weisingkawa and Taylor LLC to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944A-20.5 exec for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed 75,000.
Um, I would like to ask Mr. Bridges a question.
Yes, Counsel President. Yes, Counsel President.
I was, yes, I was under the impression that you had taken this one off because they were, uh, cup, they had a couple on here that were duplicates, and some of them were, uh, removed.
This, this was not one of the...
So, so, so this is, so their contract is totally up to 225,000?
No, Counsel President, the previous one was for, uh, services that were already rendered. They, this firm has been providing, um, defense, uh, representation on behalf of the city and certain departments, certain individuals on eight, um, pieces of litigation that they've been working on for a year and a half now. And what that first one was, was to get them paid for those matters. They have not been paid in some time. So this, this one, 22-054, is their contract for this fiscal year. The 150 was for services.
We had asked you, we had asked you to, 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 to phase them out, and you have them down here for 75,000. That's not a phase out, uh, Mr. Bridges.
Uh, yeah, if I, if I may, um, the phasing out is something that we will work on. However, they do have, and I think we discussed this at the last meeting, they are knee-deep in six different pieces of litigation. And to take those cases now and reassign them to other attorneys who will have to learn the case, undigested discovery, file motions for substitution of counsel, it would cost well in excess of 200 to 300,000 to have these cases all reassigned. Many of them are on the eve of trial. Many of them are at the dispositive motion phase where there are the motion to dismiss and motion for summary judgment. And just for the continuity of litigation, the continuity of having proper defense, it's, it's important that we allow them to finish the matters that they're working on. Um, so that, that's, that's the plan for phasing them out. And, you know, the analogy I would use is if someone has an attorney who's representing them in the ma, in the matter, and they're getting ready for the eve of trial, it just wouldn't be a prudent thing to do to pull the rug out from under them and reassign them to a firm, to a new firm that knows absolutely nothing about the case.
Thank you.
Uh, um, Counsel President?
We need a motion, we need a motion.
So move, so move.
I, I said move, so move. Counsel President? For a second. Whatever, thank you.
Okay, on roll call for Resolution 22-054, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Mueschel?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Okay, this resolution fail. Okay, next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-055. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Willens, Goldman, and Spitzer, PA to provide professional legal services regarding redevelopment matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944A-20.5 exec for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed, exceed 50,000.
So move.
Second.
Second.
On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Mueschel?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-056. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Eric M. Bernstein and Associates LLC to provide professional legal services regarding insurance litigation and insurance matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944A-20.5 exec for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed 100,000.
Uh, so move.
A move by Councilwoman, and a second by, um, Councilman Harrison.
Thank you.
Uh, that's right.
Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes, um, I just for clarity, if this, this question is for, uh, Director Bridges. Um, can you remind me, uh, who Eric Bernstein Law Firm is representing?
Um, Eric Bernstein's Law Firm is representing the city in various legal matters. Um, as requested last meeting, I sent around a spreadsheet of all the cases that every firm was working on, as well as what was billed and paid to date. So that all those cases are listed in that spreadsheet that I circulated to counsel three weeks ago.
Yeah, I, I understand that, but I ask that you remind me because I read so much. I, I, I believe this is the law firm, uh, that's, um, representing a party or parties in the city related to the MPS Communication Matters over at the Police Department. Is that correct?
Uh, that's one of the cases. They're also representing certain defendants in the, um, in, uh, Mr. Collins litigation against the city and city council members and certain directors. Um, if you bear with me, I'll pull that list up and send it to you again, but there, there are several matters.
I want to say to me again, I wanted to discuss right here, who is, who is Eric represented, Eric Bernstein Law Firm representing in the matter of MPS versus the City of Trenton?
The city.
Uh, uh, this is the city's, but they're not representing, who, who are they representing?
He's representing the city interest and city council's interest in that MPS litigation is being represented by, um, Mr. Renaud. There, there are two attorneys that are assigned to that matter. Your, your attorney, Mr. Renaud, and Mr. Bernstein's Law Firm.
Uh, so I'm, I just need clarity. And what, so in what capacity is he representing, uh, the council?
He, he, he is, council, the council has their own attorney for that, Mr. Renaud. Mr. Bernstein initiated the complaint against MPS and to enjoin MPS from, um, turning off the system. Um, that was discussed at great length in, at, at several meetings. But that was the entity at counsel's request that they initiated the order to show cause against MPS. Counsel was then subsequently brought in suresponde by the court, and when counsel was brought in as a third-party defendant, um, Mr. Renaud was asked to represent counsel's interest. So that was...
Okay, I thought the mayor was the entity or the individual that, uh, raised the complaint to restrict or prevent, um, the MPS from not, um, from not, uh, uh, exiting, uh, until he made the transition, transition to Molarola, is that correct? It wasn't the council that initiated that, um, complaint. It was the mayor, correct?
That's, it was the administration, that's correct.
Okay.
The mayor, ultimately, yes, the mayor, correct. We had the mayor, we, faced with the proposition that the communication system was going to be turned off so as to not, uh, put our emergency personnel in jeopardy. The mayor directed me to have Mr. Bernstein file the action against MPS to enjoin them from, uh, turning off any, any, uh, of the services.
So is, is, is that done? Because I saw a, a letter from Mr. Bernstein that he just, that he socialized across the city to the city council that, that, that MPS, um, has not migrated, um, off. I mean, uh, the system is still up and running, right? MPS system is still up and running, correct?
Um, I am, I, I do not, I do not know if MPS system is still up and running to the extent you want to talk about these specifics of litigation.
No, no, I'm saying Eric Bernstein's Law Firm sent, he sent, I just want to know, uh, what further, uh, uh, work does he need to do on that, uh, uh, case? Because he sent a, a letter, uh, to the council, to the city, stating that, um, we, uh, to date, he had reported back to the court, to Judge Logi, that, um, that, uh, that, that, uh, MPS remains in the City of Trenton.
I, I, I do not, I can't sit here and tell you with any degree of certainty that MPS remains in the, in the, in the city. I do know, I believe, and this is probably better directed to folks who are on the ground dealing with that migration, that MPS is no longer...
Oh, no, 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 I'm asking, I'm asking about, I'm asking about Mr. Bernstein's letter to you and to the city, uh, that he's issued to the court, that he no longer has anything more to do because, uh, the, uh, matter has been, uh, agreed.
There is more to do because that case is still ongoing. As you know, there is a counterclaim against the council and the city for what MPS, again, this is, this is, if the conversation should be had in executive session.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm asking about Mr. Bernstein's role because I don't understand why he needs $10,000.
I'm trying to tell you, Mr. Bernstein's role. The litigation is ongoing. There's a counterclaim against this council and the city for additional monies. Mr. Renaud and Mr. Bernstein are addressing that, that counterclaim as well as confirming for the court that the city is no longer using MPS. Unless and until we address the counterclaim against the city and this council, that case is still ongoing. Um, there has been some developments that can resolve that, but those discussions must be had in executive session.
Um, is Mr. Cologie on the line? Because there is a letter that Mr. Bernstein did send over. Do you have that in your, um, in your possession, Mr. Bridges?
I have, uh, I, I, do I have it right in front of me? No. No, I don't have it in front of me.
Uh, because Mr. Bernstein was clear that there was no, nothing further to do until which time, uh, uh, there was no risk at this moment of, uh, MPS departing the city and, and until at which time there is, there was nothing further for him to do. And as relates to the claim that the mayor filed, and the ma, the mayor engaged his representation.
Right, and again, that case, that was one aspect of that case. There is also a counter suit for additional funds that MPS is alleging it is owed. That is still being defended. So that, that order to show cause has not come to an end yet. Again, if we can discuss in executive session, Mr. Bernstein did share with me, and Mr. Renaud also shared with me, a potential resolution for that matter that will end it now. But I cannot have that conversation with you in public that has to be done in executive session.
Okay, well, based on the, 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 the letter that Mr. Bernstein sent, uh, it seems to me that he no longer, at this juncture, uh, uh, has any to do on this case, and I won't be voting for this. Thank you.
And just for the record, this is not the only case that the Bernstein firm has worked in publicly.
Excuse me, excuse me, um, um, Lourdes, you may move to the vote, please.
Okay. Roll call on Resolution 22-056. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Mueschel?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
This resolution fail. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-058. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Grady Law Firm to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal lit, 2022, to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed 50,000.
So move.
So move. Second.
On roll call?
Uh, Counsel President?
Uh, go right ahead, Councilwoman Vaughn.
Um, again, I just want to say for the record, uh, to refresh, um, perhaps the recollection of my counsel colleagues, the LuBardi Law Firm, um, this, this contract was supposed to have, um, uh, have been, uh, was, was winded down. We agreed to that, uh, uh, after she was, um, or the, the firm was, um, engaged by our former law director, uh, John Morelli to represent him in his case. So he had, she had joined us briefly in the, in the, one of the executive session, uh, to represent Mr. Morelli, and at that time, she was on a contract. And that was the last piece of work, I believe, that she was doing, and we had a contract of a value of 25 grand. But I think since she has, um, invoiced and has gone down on, I'm very sho, I'm very, um, um, surprised that we now have a, a, a new contract here. She should not have been given any more, uh, uh, work in the city because she, she's, it, it was reported that the remaining work on her last contract was, uh, related to, um, the, the Morelli case. So I won't be voting for this either because it seems to me that, um, that this, uh, new contract, um, is just not necessary. We, we have other lawyers that provide the, uh, the labor law expertise. Thank you. I won't be voting for this.
Um, roll call, um, Ms. Rodriguez?
Roll call, Resolution 22-058. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Mueschel?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Resolution fail. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-059. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Florio Kenny Rival LLC to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other legal matters through a... other legal matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $50,000. Could you scroll it on the screen, please? Mr. Rivera, could you scroll that out?
Mr. Rivera, it's 22-059. Yes. On roll call, Ms. Rodriguez?
Do we have a motion to move this?
So moved.
On roll call, Caldwell-Wilson? Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-060. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Michelle C. Verno LLC to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other legal matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-061. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Renaud Coughlin-Michello Attorneys at Law to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other legal matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $25,000.
So moved.
Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-062. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Boyle and Valenti Law PC to provide professional legal services regarding special counsel litigation and other matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
So moved.
Second. On roll call? Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Musial?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-063. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Renaud Di Apollinino LLC to provide professional legal services in regards to special counsel litigation and other matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
So moved.
Do we have a second? On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Musial?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
Council President McBride? No.
This resolution failed. Next on roll call is Resolution 22-064. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Michael A. Armstrong and Associates LLC to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $30,000.
So moved.
Moved by Council President McBride, second by Caldwell-Wilson. On roll call? Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed.
Council President, if I may ask a quick question? The prior one had failed. What resolution number was that?
It was 22-063.
I would just ask the council, actually, read that resolution before they voted.
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Next resolution on roll call is 22-065. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Murphy Orlando LLC to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
So moved. So moved. Second. Council President? No, Council President, I have... I wanted to speak on this particular one.
Yes, go right ahead.
And this could be a question for Wes Bridges and/or Mr. Kologji. This particular law firm, since I've been on council, I haven't seen it. Mr. Bridges, this is a new law firm to the city of Trenton, correct?
That's correct.
Yes. And I believe I had gotten two communications from constituents within our orders concerned about this particular resolution in this law firm because they're the same gentleman or the same entity, an individual, is also on a docket competing for a grant or requesting a grant of more than $1 million. And I believe that individual is with the nonprofit organization Isles. The CEO of Isles is or at one time, I don't know, but I was informed by citizens of this city that this individual is of counsel. The CEO of Isles, Sean Jackson, is of counsel of the Murphy Orlando Law Firm. And at the same time, he's on this docket right now of asking for $1 million from the city in grant funding. So how is that? Is that a potential conflict of any sort, Mr. Kologji and/or Mr. Bridges, that we're entertaining a entity, a nonprofit organization in our city, Isles? The CEO of that organization is on this docket tonight for consideration of a $1 million-plus grant, and then at the same time, he has a law firm here that he is of counsel to. And I won't be voting for this because I don't understand... I mean, I actually have the same concern with my constituents, that we should not be granting this individual a $100,000 legal contract to his law firm that he associate in some way, passively or directly, and at the same time, is a CEO of one of the nonprofits that we do partnerships with in the city. So, Mr. Kologji, is there any conflicts here with this situation?
Ms. Vaughn, I don't have any information on this. I'd certainly be happy to review it and get back to you with, you know, with an opinion. But based on the somewhat choppy information we have, I'd like to review it before I say anything about this firm or this individual.
Okay. That's fair. And to that end, I would move Council President to have a table until we can investigate this matter and get some legal guidance on it.
Councilwoman Vaughn, who is the individual you were saying, just so I can prepare myself for that research?
Oh, yeah. The gentleman named is Sean Jackson. He is the current CEO of Isles, the chief executive officer of Isles, Inc., or Isles LLC, I believe. It's a nonprofit organization. We're very familiar with it. It has a long history, over 30, 40-year history here in the city of Trenton. And this individual has taken over that role because I believe the longtime CEO has stepped down. So he is also of counsel in this law firm that is asking to be awarded a legal contract with the city, 22-065. So he is currently... I don't know if he's currently of counsel or have departed, but nonetheless, this is a new... I just... folks find it very concerning that this new law firm pops up at the same time that he is also on the docket for a $1 million grant with the city, I believe, if we go further down. So the gentleman named Sean Jackson is now...
Council President, if I may... I'm looking at this firm's documents.
Excuse me. Point of order. Once you make a motion to table something, the motion must be heard. Mrs. Rodriguez, the motion has to be heard once it was asked to be tabled.
I will second the motion to table.
Okay. On roll call to table Resolution 22-065. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Table to win. Council President. What's the timeframe?
I'm gonna get... Yes, Councilwoman Vaughn.
It could be until Mr. Kologji and Mr. Bridges' next meeting. That should be ample time to vet this particular individual and understanding if he has any conflicts.
March the 17th. Okay. You have to vote, Ms. Rodriguez.
Okay. Okay. Motion to table Resolution 22-065 to the next city council meeting of March 17, 2022. It was made by Councilwoman Vaughn and seconded by Councilman Rodriguez. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Musial?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President Kathy McBride?
Yes.
Okay, this motion passed. Resolution table to next meeting. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-066. Resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Parker McKay, P.A., to provide professional legal services regarding general municipal litigation and other matters through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in an amount not to exceed $100,000.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-069. Resolution authorizing the award of a professional legal service contract to Kimberly Stewart Exquire through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA 1944-8-20.5 exempt to provide prosecutorial services for a period of one year from January 1, 2022 to December 31, 2022 in Trenton Municipal Court in an amount not to exceed $32,500.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
One second.
On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
This resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-075. It's resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Weber Dow Law It's resolution authorizing the award of a contract with the Law Office of Weber Dow Law LLC to provide professional legal services in regards to special counsel matters involving litigation brought against the city of Trenton by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection through a fair and open process in accordance with NJSA nineteen forty-four A dash twenty-point-five X Act for a period of one year from January first, twenty-twenty-two to December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-two in an amount not to exceed one hundred and fifty thousand.
Motion's first.
Second?
Second.
On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Uh, no, I have a question. Um, first of all, um, Joe Rivera, can you please scroll up further?
Seven-five.
Seventy-five, twenty-two dash zero seven-five.
Okay, um, yes, um, can you, uh, yeah, these are the two, right? Um, Environmental Protection, one fifty, one fifty, uh, one is the, just one, one second, just give me a minute, I'm just trying to locate, I gotta be, okay. So, where on which one, twenty-two oh seven-four?
No, one oh seven-five. Oh, seven-four was a part of the consent agenda.
Yeah, so, um, oh seven-five, I, I had asked Mr. Bridges, um, last time, uh, how is this contract for the work that Weber Dow is doing? Is it in conflict with what we have sourced, uh, Riker Danzig to do for Trenton Waterworks? I can't imagine both law firms representing Trenton Waterworks on the regulatory issues, uh, DEP has cited us for.
Uh, Council President, if I may?
Yes, you may.
These, these are actually very distinct and, and vital, vitally important. Um, Riker Danzig is handling the lawsuit with the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. The Weber Dow firm is defending, uh, the TWW's interest on the suits from the, uh, customers' townships, uh, that are, that are going, so they're actually two completely separate matters, uh, that these two firms have been working on for some time now. They, they may appear redundant, but again, one is for the DEP matter and one is for the lawsuit that the townships have against the city in Trenton Waterworks.
Um, I just want to be clear, um, and maybe I'm not getting it because I know that Riker Danzig also represented the city against the lawsuit that the champ, the township had filed against us. And actually, he was very successful in negotiating them to back off. So I don't understand, did another lawsuit come forward from the township?
That, that lawsuit is ongoing and, and has not ceased. Both, both matters are proceeding a, a, and are intertwined with each other, but they're, but they both are currently receding. We would not be putting a contract up for, um, uh, them to do work with the litigation with the townships if that, if that litigation was over. It's still ongoing.
But, but the council was never informed that there was another lawsuit presented by, filed by, uh, the townships. Is there another lawsuit that was filed by the township? I don't believe so.
It, it's, it is the same lawsuit that the townships filed that they have been working on for some time now. There is not a new one, this is the same ongoing litigation with the, with the, uh, townships that have sued the city in Trenton Waterworks.
But I, but, but, uh, uh, I know that we received, uh, communication from that litigation under the former DEP management, what was her name, Captain McCabe, that, that, uh, uh, Riker Danzig came to this forum, came to this meeting and notified us that they successfully, uh, uh, was able to negotiate with the, um, with the townships to stand down, or, uh, that, that lawsuit was, um, I don't want to say dismissed, but it was, it's no longer, I guess it was dismissed, probably with, with, without prejudice, but I, I, I don't know what lawsuit, unless you could tell me the, 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 the number of that lawsuit, uh, I would appreciate it, uh, Mr. Bridges.
I, I don't have the number of the lawsuit in front of me. As I said, that litigation with the townships are ongoing. I can provide that to you, uh, when I have time to put that.
I, I would like to see the, 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 the lawsuit that the file, that the township has filed that off the, uh, the law firm Weber Dow is representing us on. I would like to see that lawsuit, that, that, that filing. Is it M E R, and, and which judge is presiding over it? Is it, is it Mr. Logi in, in that case as well, Mr. Bridges?
I believe it's Judge Logi. I don't have all the cases and litigation in front of me and who's handling it, but I can tell you that, that litigation, I can tell you, can I please finish? I can tell you that litigation has not ended. That litigation with the township is ongoing. I'm not aware of any communication that you received from someone saying it's over, but that litigation is ongoing. Yes, I would, would be happy to provide that docket number to you and, and the status of that litigation, but it is still ongoing.
Okay, okay, I, I can, okay, so, docket number for, so, Council President, I would like to move to table this until we can get the docket number, uh, and the lawsuit that was filed and, in New Jersey Superior Court that Weber Dow is representing the city against, um, the townships. I, 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 I was not aware of this unless anybody on this council was aware that there was an additional lawsuit filed by the townships above and beyond what Riker Danzig, uh, DeHoke was representing us on. So, um, so I can't imagine that there's two, that there are representatives on the same lawsuit, but Mr. Bridges said he's gonna share, share with us that docket number of that complaint. So I would like to table it until we receive it for next council meeting, that docket number that this law firm is representing us on.
I second it.
There's a motion to table on the floor, Ms., uh, Rodriguez.
Yes. Motion to table Resolution twenty-two zero six-five to the next council meeting on March seventeen, twenty-twenty-two. Um, motion made by Councilwoman Vaughn and seconded by Councilman Rodriguez. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
No.
Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Musial?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
No.
Council President McBride?
No.
Motion fail. So, roll call on Resolution twenty-two dash zero seven-five. Is there a motion to move Resolution for a vote?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I'm sorry, and, can Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution, okay, no, it's, it's Resolution twenty-one five seventy. And it's Resolution authorizing change order number one to the contract with Pars Environmental to conduct environmental remediations of petroleum L and A P L in soil and groundwater at the Federated Metal Site Enterprise Avenue. Resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution twenty-two zero three-zero. Resolution designating Vanessa Sullivan as redeveloper of the property located at six fifty-one and six fifty-three North Clinton Avenue, block twenty-one, seven oh one, lots twenty-five and twenty-four within the North Clinton Avenue redevelopment area and authorizing the execution of a redevelopment, redevelopment agreement and an RCA grant agreement regarding same.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yeah.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution twenty-two dash zero three-two. Resolution approving the substantial amendment to the fiscal year twenty-eighteen Annual Action Plan beginning July first, twenty-eighteen through June eighteen, twenty-nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution twenty-two zero three-three. Resolution approving the substantial amendment to the fiscal year twenty-sixteen Annual Action Plan beginning July first, twenty-sixteen through June thirtieth, twenty-seventeen. Is there a motion to move?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next resolution on the docket for roll call is Resolution twenty-two zero thirty-four. Resolution approving the substantial amendments to the fiscal year twenty-fifteen Annual Action Plan beginning July first, twenty-fifteen through June thirtieth, twenty-sixteen.
So moved.
So moved.
On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
I'm sorry, which one is this again?
It's twenty-two zero thirty-four.
Uh, no.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Resolution passed. Next on roll call is Resolution twenty-two dash eighty-four? I think that was on the consent, I'm sorry, I believe that was consent.
That was consent.
Yeah, that was consent.
Eighty-three.
That was a consent.
Yeah, it was consent, right?
Twenty-two dash oh eighty-four.
Mm-hmm.
I don't. I don't have it down as a consent, do you? Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, do you have it down as a consent?
I don't even have that eighty-four on my.
Twenty-two dash zero dash zero eight-four. Under public works.
I don't have eighty-four on my docket.
Um, just, uh, Lord has to be safe.
Yes, it was on the consent.
It was, okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome, okay. So next resolution on roll call is Resolution twenty-two zero eight-five. Resolution exercising the option to, to extend the contract for an additional one year awarded to multiple vendors for repairs of order, distribution, infrastructure on an as-needed basis for the construction of a wide range of emergency and non-emergency critical repairs from the time of award to December tenth, twenty-twenty-two in an amount not to exceed one million two hundred thousand dollars.
Um, Council President?
So, uh, you have to get your motion first, uh, Caldwell-Wilson, and then?
Well, we did, we did it before, okay.
Um. Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Okay, so why isn't there a contract date in here? This is another one where we don't have a contract date. Mr. Cruz?
Madam President, um, we can do an amendment on the floor and, um, uh, do today's date, uh, moving forward for, uh, until, uh, March second of twenty-twenty-three.
So from, from today?
Uh, yes, from March, yes, March third, twenty-twenty-two to this, uh, to March second, twenty-twenty-three.
Okay. Did you get that, Lord?
Yes.
Does Wes have, yes, yeah.
Okay, Resolution twenty-two zero eight-five with a motion to change the date to March third, twenty-twenty-two to March second, twenty-twenty-three. Roll call. Call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Uh, no vote.
No vote, you said?
Yes, M V, no vote.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
No.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
No.
Okay, Resolution passed with the motion to insert the date of March third, twenty-twenty-two to March second, twenty-twenty-three. Next resolution on roll call is twenty-two zero eight-six. Resolution exercising the option to extend the contract for an additional one year awarded to multiple, to municipal maintenance company for the furnishing, supply, and installation of four twenty-four inch filtered drain valves for the City of Trenton Department of Water and Sewer Water Utility Water Filtration Plant from date of award to October second, twenty-twenty-two in an amount not to exceed seventy-one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
On roll call, Councilwoman.
Okay. I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman.
Um, Mr. Cruz, this, this again says we're extending it for one year, but we don't have the contract date in there. It has a finished date with no beginning.
Um, Madam President, I think.
Yes.
Uh, Council Vice President, you expressed that, that the end date of the contract was something that you, uh, needed, so we put that in there, obviously.
No, I needed the actual contract date because I don't know when their last contract ended.
Oh, you were looking for the prior contract date.
Well, well, no, I can't, you're saying the end. I can't, you're saying the end of the contract date, so it, I don't, I don't understand.
This contract?
It says from date of award, from date of award to October the 2nd, 2022. We need the actual contract date in there because I don't know when the current contract ended or when it's ending.
So you're looking for the prior contract date?
No, I'm looking for the current contract date. Just like the last resolution. So if it's for a year, that, 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 that would be from, it says from date of award. What is the date of? We don't go by date of award. We have to have a contract date if it's for one year.
So, Madam President, so, uh, Vice President, so the date of award would be today, which would be March 3rd, 2022. We could do the same thing that we did with the prior resolution. Uh, this, this work is actually for valves. It's, it's, it's very specific. It's only four valves that need to be replaced. The problem is that we need to have, uh, according to what the director, uh, mentioned, uh, there has to be, uh, they have to be replaced at, at the perfect time, and, uh, we are waiting for that opportunity for us to be able to replace these valves. And this is why that was not done on the first year of the contract, uh, because we knew that the conditions were not, may not be proper to do that. And that's why we are now asking, uh, for an extension of one more year, uh, just in case the conditions, uh, are fair for us to be able to have these replacements done. Um, so we can, uh, at, at your, uh, at your request, uh, we can make it starting again, uh, today, uh, March 3rd, 2022, uh, and we can end it on March 2nd, 2023.
So that, October the 2nd, 2022 would have to come out of there?
October, uh, yes, we can make that amendment on the floor.
And the previous one, that would have to come out of there. So you could amend that and put the dates in and get us the fresh topic.
Uh, we can, we can work with the Law Department to get that done, uh, Madam President.
Thank you.
Uh, Council President?
Vice President.
So, 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 you're not amending this on the floor? What are you doing with it, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yeah, we can move it. Mr. Mr. Cruz assures me we can read the amendment in there. Read the amendment, and we can vote on it with the amendment.
Uh, Council President? Before we vote on it, could I ask a question?
Yes, um, but it, but it would need to be amended on the floor. All right, Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yeah, um, actually, um, Council Vice President Caldwell-Wilson raises interesting point here. Um, I just want to just say, ask for the record. Um, and I can ask, uh, Law Director, uh, Bridges or Council, uh, Cologie. So when, when a contract is accessed, when we're act, when we're on a contract, when there's a term that allows, uh, the city to exercise the option to extend, this, we, the assumption here is that the contract has expired, right? So you can't extend a contract unless the contract has indeed expired. So for transparency, when did this contract expire, Mr. Cruz?
I am going by what the resolution says. According to this, um, the first award was done, uh, awarded, uh, a contract October 1st, 2020, 2020, and then it went on to, um, October, I guess, the, uh, September 30th of 2021, and then the new contract would have been October, October 1st, 2021 to, um, Octo, uh, September 30th of 2022, if it was for a one-year contract.
So right now, so right here, we're, we're late with introducing this resolution, right? So in essence, they have been working without, on a contract, and now we're trying to put one in, uh, you know, exercise the extension, it looks appeared. So in essence, the, the contract had, it has expired back in October 2021. And now we're just now bringing the extension for approval. Is that correct? Or am I off base here?
Uh, Mark Levinberg, are you on the line?
Yes, sir. Uh, Council President, if I may?
Yes, you may, uh, Mr. Levinberg.
Thank you, Council President, yes. Um, these, these four valves, none of the valves have been done at this time. Uh, the opportunity did not arise due to issues we're having with the, uh, reservoir, uh, and the intake. Um, certainly Taya Humphrey-Brown can, can be more elaborate when it comes to the reason of that.
She's asking for a date, Mr. Levinberg. She wanted to know when the contract?
I believe it was October, it's that October date, and the contract expired in October. The work was not done, and we're, we're asking for an extension to extend that so we can have another year to hopefully get that worked out.
Yeah, but, but I don't believe that we're following the process in the time. It, it, I, it appears that, when were you, as soon as the, um, contract expired, we should have seen this contract in November 2021 asking for the extension, or even in September 2021 as we were approaching expiration. But to come here almost, you know, uh, six months later and start asking to extend, I, I, I think that, uh, it's not transparent as to what is going on here. If, if the contract, we, we definitely need the expiration date in here, we have to know. And, uh, why was, why is there a delay, uh, uh, Mr. Levinberg? Why is there a delay in introducing the extension to counsel for approval?
I, I certainly can't answer that question, uh, in detail why there was delay. I could tell you that we did submit that, you know, back in October or before, it would have expired. It's just, as you know, it's taking a long time to get, uh, certain items, uh, on the docket, and the earliest.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no. Uh, Council President?
No. No.
Uh, so. This has, I mean, uh, that's something that.
This has never come up before.
Exactly. So, um, and then I would want, I mean, I don't mean to go back, but now this raises concern. We just approved 1.2 million, and, and we're under the same premise of, of the extension of a contract, and we don't have expiration dates. So I don't even know if we're in compliance with contract law here as far as extensions. I don't even know if these two resolutions or this one that we're on now, 22-086, even qualifies for an extension. Because it's been quite a while since it's been, uh, the contract date hasn't even been disclosed. Contract expiration date has not been, uh, uh, disclosed here. And are we in compliance, um, Mr. Cologie?
We've been through this a number of times in the past. The local public contracts law has a section on extensions. When a resolution is being prepared, you know, I would be of the assumption that that was looked at and that that was incorporated into the analysis. I can't speak to that because I didn't have anything to do with this, but there's a clear section, it's 4811-15, that talks, you know, deals exclusively with extensions. So that's the law that would govern, it's in there. Now, was that covered in this case? I have no idea.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know because, uh, the contract expired in October 2021, almost five months ago. And now the department is just coming to counsel asking for that contract to, to be extended. I don't know whether that should go back out to bid. It's just that, you just don't know. There's, I don't think we have enough information to make that determination, um, Mr. Levinberg. Because, you know, now, you know, eyebrow are raising like, okay, your contract expired, uh, October 2021, and here we are, March 2022, just now asking for an extension. Seems to me that it should go back out to bid.
I think that should be the question. Yes, go right ahead, uh, Mr. Rodriguez.
I agree with Ms. Vaughn on this. Uh, also, this is not the first extension. As Mr. Cruz read, this is the second time this contract has been extended, and we still don't have the conditions to replace those valves. You know, that's not such a shame, you know? The conditions, what are the conditions for that? You know, that we haven't been able to do it in two years, two years. It's not, if it was the first time, but I believe that Ms. Vaughn is right. Uh, we have to do something about this. It has to be either pulled, a new contract has to be started because it's not. Uh, we are past the, the time for extension.
I, I, I think that, um, that, um, it, it would, the, the, uh, the right thing to do is to, um, ask Mr. Cologie and our Law Director to tell us whether this, uh, contract should have went back out to bid, and they should also tell us about 22-085. Because what we, what we don't want to do is keep violating procurement laws. We don't need to be doing that. And so we just definitely need to know whether or not these, uh, contracts should have went back out to bid. Because if you sit on a contract for five months or six months and, and then you solely give it to the, uh, company, I, I, I just, I just don't think that, um, that's the right thing to do under the procurement law. If you sit on a contract and let that contract go dead for five months or six months or four months, I, I believe that it should go back out to bid whether or not, uh, these individuals will be the same people that, um, uh, have the lowest bid and, or they're the ones to get the contract. I just believe under the, uh, procurement law, you cannot sit on, uh, a contract and allow the contract to expire, and, and four months down the road, you come back and say, I want to give them an extension when it has already expired. I don't believe that that's the way the contract law works. So, um, we could use some insight from Mr. Cologie on, on this because I think we've talked about this, uh, several times before, and it should not keep coming back.
I agree with you. Now, Council President, we already passed 085?
Yes.
Okay, I would make a recommendation then, based on our conversation, if council is desirous, we take a vote to rescind the passage of 22-085 and to table it along with 086 pending the legal, uh, verification that you've asked for.
Council President, can I ask a question? Can I ask my question? Because I wanted to wait till.
Yes.
Opportunity to ask a question. Okay.
Yes.
My question is, Mr. Levinberg, the, uh, four 24-inch filter drain valves, where are they located?
Uh, Council President, man?
Yes, go right ahead.
Council President? Yes, all right. So the, the four drain valves are, uh, when we look at the filtration plant, um, there are four major filter days, okay, which had eight large filters on each one. Uh, these 24-inch drain valves, uh, isolate or drain out the entire section. Uh, all four are currently leaking as we speak right now, so we're really treating the water multiple times, um, and adding additional chemicals to that. So when we ask for what the right conditions are, well, we have to have, uh, a low water consumption time of year, okay, which tends to be more in the winter. Uh, we also have to have the, um, reservoir, uh, completely filled because what we're going to do is we're actually going to be shutting down 25% of our pumping capacity. Uh, if we can't make that 25%, uh, 25 pumping capacity, uh, we would have to open up our emergency interconnections and take water from, um, from American Water Supplement that to get that done. I do appreciate this.
Mr. Levinberg, let me ask you a question.
I'm sorry.
So you, you, you're stating to Councilman Harrison's question that, um, the, the water is low and this is the opportune time. So we've had this contract, uh, for two years. You would be asking us. So if you knew that we had to wait for the opportune time, wouldn't it have been better to be proactive and put that resolution up before it expired, uh, or, um, nearing the expiration date rather than to wait for that resol, um, that contract to completely expire, uh, uh, five months down the road to talk about this is the opportune time? What does that mean? Because you've had the opportune time to come to this council and put this resolution on the table before it expired in knowing that you had to wait for the right time to change the valves out. So you should have been proactive instead of reacting here five months later? And do, do that give you the right to violate the procurement law?
Okay, well, I, I can't speak.
I'm going to move to, um, I'm going to move to, um, undo, uh, I'm going to make a motion to, uh, undo, uh, 22-085, and then I'll move to table the both of them, uh, until we get a clear understanding of this procurement law. So, um, uh, Mr. Rodriguez, if, if, if we could move to un, uh, undo 22-085. Mr. Rodriguez seconded.
Okay.
Okay. We're moving to rescind it?
Yes.
Are we, we're moving to rescind it? Okay.
Yes.
And we're tabled to what?
085. Until Mr. Cologie and Mr. Bridges give us the information that is needed for the procurement law and if these should have went back out for, uh, uh, to rebid.
The first will be a motion to rescind. The second will be a motion to table until such time as the information's provided.
Yes, um, that's the, that's the emotion, um, uh, Ms. Rodriguez is to rescind 22-085 now.
Okay. Roll call to rescind the vote on Resolution 22-085. Motion by Council President, second by Councilman Rodriguez. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison? Councilman Musial?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And now I would like to table, um, both of them, 22-08, 085 and 22-086. I want to table them until, um, both of, um, the Law Director and the, um, and Mr. Cologie gives us the information about this procurement law and if these resolutions should go back out to bid.
Okay, motion to table Resolutions 22-085 and 22-086 made by Council President McBride, second by Councilwoman Wilkins. Roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Um, they're being tabled until information requested is provided. Councilman Harrison?
No.
Councilman Musial?
No.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Most, both motion pass. Next resolution on roll call. is Resolution 22-087. Resolution accepting a bid and awarding a contract to Capital Supply Construction Products, Inc., for the furnishing and delivery FOB of full-circle bands, couplings, and taped-out sleeves for a period of one year from date of award in an amount not to exceed $73,307.
Can I get a motion?
There is second?
Okay.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes, I believe that, you know, we keep on repeating the same thing, from the date of award, you know, instead of a date. And I believe that this is not professional, to not come to us like that. None of them, all of the ones that are said that should be amended. Because, you know, one year from date of award, you know, it doesn't say Mr. Lavenberg is a professional, I thought.
Council President.
Yes, go right ahead, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yeah. Mr. Lavenberg, I need to ask you. Why did you change the format of a resolution for a contract or for with no dates in it, with no contract dates?
These were, again, these were sent up earlier in 2021, and it was the time getting there, so we didn't know exactly when it was going to hit a docket.
Well, that's not how it works. When it comes to us, we need to have a contract date, and we didn't know when the other contract expired. For 287, 087, and 088, I mean, you know, I would move to table them so that we can have Mr. Koloji and our law director look at the procurement law on this, and you will need to furnish them with the expiration of their contract date.
My seconded, I think, must. Yes, and the motion must be heard. Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes. Okay, motion to table. Do you want to do both of them together? Councilwoman? Okay, motion to table Resolutions Number 22-087 and 22-088. Motion is done by Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. And second?
Second.
By Councilman Rodriguez.
Okay. It's being tabled for the purpose of getting information on the procurement law from the legal department and Mr. Koloji. Okay. It's being tabled until council receives the procurement information being requested. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
No.
Councilman Musial.
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Okay. Next resolution on roll call is Resolution 22-089. It's Resolution Authorizing Payment to PAC Two LLC for Emergency Work Performed for the City of Trenton, Trenton Water Works in the amount of $74,547.79.
Some of them.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson, second by Councilman Harrison. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes, yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Musial.
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn. Councilwoman Vaughn.
You're unmuted.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Resolution passed. 22-04, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton Traffic Bus Stops as it applies to various locations in the city of Trenton, along East Day Street westbound on the northerly side thereof at between North Broad Street and Montgomery Street, mid-block beginning at 57 east of North Broad Street.
Some of them. Second.
Second.
Roll call on first reading of Ordinance 22-04. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Musial.
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Okay, pass on first reading. Next is Ordinance 22-05. Ordinance Amending and Supplementing Chapter 14 of the Code of the City of Trenton Traffic Bus Stops as it applies to various locations in the city of Trenton, along Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard, southbound on the westerly side thereof at Sweets Avenue near side, beginning at the northerly curved line of Sweets Avenue and extending 105 feet northerly therefrom.
Some of them.
Some of them.
Roll call for first reading of Ordinance 22-05. Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman Musial.
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Pass on first reading.
Ms.?
Council President?
Ms. Rodriguez, Ms. Rodriguez, the
Yes.
The second reading will be April the 17th for both these ordinances. They will be advertised for April the 17th.
Okay.
Uh, Council President?
Yes.
I thought, did we vote on the resolution for the grant for aisles? Was that party consent?
Which number was that, Councilwoman?
I don't know. Because I didn't see it, we didn't, I thought.
Is that 065?
There was a, there was a one point, I think it was one point.
We have to look for the number of the resolution.
I'm sorry. The 22-075 was the law firm, I mean, with the law. I'm talking about the grant of one point, I think it was 1.2 million, maybe less, a little less.
You tabled it.
The only thing, that was for the
That was for the law contract. I'm looking for the
No, that was for the water. That was for the water that we just tabled.
No, there was a resolution on this docket for aisle.
22-065 was tabled.
Nope. That's not for aisles, that's for a law firm. She's talking about aisles, the organization.
It was pulled?
You would have to, yeah, I don't believe it was on this docket. And I need to move to some more business, and Mr. Koloji?
Yes, we have a walk-on resolution. Does the clerk have it?
Yes, I have a copy of it.
I don't know, was it publicized in the agenda? If not, we'll have to read it into the record.
Yes.
It wasn't on the agenda.
Okay. Madam President, I would ask that the clerk read the resolution into the record.
Yes.
Okay, I believe that the next resolution will be Resolution 22-090. Okay. This is a one point.
Excuse me, Ms. Rodriguez. Mr. Koloji, you're going to have to go back in the back before this is voted on and change that language if it hasn't been changed to the waivers.
I can put on the record what occurred. I had discussions with Mr. Gonzalez as recently as 45 minutes ago. He was sent a waiver that was executed by Mr. Cruz and by Mr. Zelinski. There are a couple of adjustments that have to be made. The word employee has to be changed to consultant, and the $15,000 has to be changed to $5,000 per month. I spoke to Mr. Cruz. My understanding is that he's going to send over a corrected version, which Mr. Gonzalez will be waiting for, and my understanding is he'll approve it first thing in the morning. But I advise Mr. Gonzalez, we're moving forward with council's consideration of the resolution. Is that accurate, Mr. Cruz?
Yes, that is correct. But I believe that the one that lawyers have is the resolution that you actually are discussing as we speak. If you look at that, if IT can put it back up, yes.
Mine says consultant, it doesn't say.
No, that's not it. That's an ordinance. There, that one.
All righty, so, all righty. Lawyers, could you read it into the record, please?
Yes. Okay, Resolution 22-090. A resolution awarding an emergency contract for consulting services to the Trenton City Council's office to Anthony Conti.
That should say City Clerk's Office.
City Clerk's Office.
No, I'm sorry, the Trenton City Clerk's Office to Anthony Conti. Okay. Whereas, as there exists an emergency in the Trenton City Clerk's office affecting the public safety and welfare and requiring the immediate performance of consulting services, and whereas the city clerk has taken a leave of absence and his office is at a virtual non-functioning level with significant backlog in the preparation of meeting minutes, the addressing of Open Public Records Act, OPR, request the acceptance and applications and payments from the public, the ability to provide ordinance, resolutions, and other documents to council and the public, preparation for the primary and general elections, and numerous other areas of its intended operational functions, and whereas the emergency situation referenced above has increased over time to a crisis level and mandates immediate action by the governing body. And whereas, it has been determined that a consultant with experience and expertise in the operations of a city clerk's office is necessary to immediately address and remediate the aforementioned deficiencies and whereas NJSA 4811-6 provides that a contract may be negotiated or awarded without public advertising for bids and bidding, therefore notwithstanding that the contract price will exceed the bid threshold if the above emergency conditions exist. Now, therefore, be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trenton as follows. Based upon the foregoing an emergency contract for consulting services to the City Clerk's Office, be and hereby is awarded to Anthony Conti. One, well, I'm not going to read the address. Said contract shall commence March 4, 2022, and shall continue until such time as City Council is able to take further action to address this matter, or until such emergency no longer exists, whichever is earlier. Consultant shall be paid a fee of $5,000 per month pro rata from any partial month that said services are rendered. Consultant shall be under the exclusive supervision and direction of City Council and shall report to council as directed. In the event any additional support staff is assigned to assist consultant, they shall be under his exclusive supervision and authority. The city clerk and his staff are hereby directed to provide all requested assistance to consultant, including but not limited to documentation, data, access supplies, and a work area. This contract shall be terminated by the city at its discretion, depending on the ongoing needs of the City Clerk's office. This resolution is expressed contingent upon approval waiver by DCA.
Mr. Koloji, shouldn't that say terminated by the City Council? Could you put that in there, please?
Yes. I would consider a motion to amend to put the City Council and to change the word express to expressly. So, we had the word council in number six and expressly in number seven. That could be the subject of the motion.
Yes, I make a motion to amend.
Some of them. Second? Okay. Okay. Motion to amend walk-on resolution 2290 to include City Council instead of the city.
In number six.
On, by number six. And okay, motion made by Council President, second by Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson. On roll call
And the word expressly at number seven, please.
The word, I'm sorry?
In number seven, it should be the word expressly instead of expressly.
Expressly, okay.
Council President?
Thank you.
Council President? Council President?
Yes, let us finish this, and then let us finish the amendment.
Yeah, the question, yeah.
Okay. Motion to change walk-on resolution 2290 to include on number six that the contract may be determined by the City Council. And number seven resolution, I mean, number seven to say this resolution is expressly. Motion was made by Council President, second by Caldwell-Wilson. On roll call, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Well, I had my question, I slid in there regarding what I was reading. He's just going to be consulting, you're saying, correct? He's going to, right, Council President? That's what my question was.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. Councilman Musial.
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins.
Yes.
Council President McBride.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed.
We have one more issue that I think we should address on the record. A certification of availability of funds was provided by Mr. Zelinski, and I know Mr. Cruz is still on. It appears basically okay, but under purpose, it says that to provide consulting services to the office of the city clerk commencing, commencing March four two thousand twenty-two through December twenty-one, twenty-two. The through December one, I'm sorry, the through December thirty-one, twenty-two should be crossed out. It should simply say commencing March four, two thousand twenty-two based upon a twenty-hour work week for a fee not to exceed. Instead of fifteen thousand, it should be five thousand per month. The certification is for fifteen thousand, which is fine, but the allocation of it should be cleared up in the, uh, certification.
I make the motion to amend, I make the motion to amend on the floor.
Second.
Mr. Cruz, are there any problem with amending this and provide a clean copy of the certification?
We will go by, by what the, uh, by what the resolution says, so yes, and I could be in touch with you tomorrow to get the proper language.
Yes, okay, that's why.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
Is there a motion to pass the resolution?
So moved.
Second. Okay, roll call to, um, vote on the resolution, Councilwoman Caldwell-Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Harrison?
Yes.
Councilman Musial?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Vaughn?
Yes.
Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes.
Council President McBride?
Yes.
Okay, resolution pass. Okay, next, um, the docket is a walk-on ordinance?
No, um, Mi- um, Mr. Colosi?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, there were some difficulties with that ordinance. I spoke to Mr. Hoffman. Are you talking about the redevelopment agency?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that should be held until the next meeting. We've got, uh, some issues that we have to work out.
Okay. Okay, that is all, um, for the docket. And then next on the agenda will be, um, public comment.
Yeah, is that your hand, um, Councilman Rodriguez? Is there anyone from the public that would like to make, uh?
No, I, 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 I was just muttering myself.
Okay. It says two people hand raised, but I don't see the three people. Do you see them, uh, Councilwoman Vaughn? Do you see three people? Is it Mr. Rivera can see them?
I, I can see them, Council President, that we have about five people with their hands raised.
Okay, but I can't see them. Uh, the, the only thing I see is a number that says three hands raised.
Did you like to read their names? Okay.
Yes, please.
First person is Matthew Kutch, Council President.
Okay, Miss.
The first person is two zero five zero. Six oh nine, three nine, six two zero five zero.
That's Stacy Ann Pearson?
Yep, she's first.
Okay, so Mrs. Pearson, go right ahead.
Um, I'm very glad that you brought up, uh, the resolutions from the February seventeenth or sixteenth. I'm glad they're being taken care of. Uh, one of the questions I have, and that is the lovely lady who took over, uh, is it Musial or is it Mutual? How do you pronounce your last name?
Um, Councilman Musial?
So it is pronounced Musial?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, hearing the person mispronouncing your name was just totally for loose. I would like to know and be sure that the best stops both for, um, Martin Luther King Boulevard and for the East State Street at, uh, North Broad. I really would like to see you pass these because when I'm walking and all, I get, I actually get bothered by individuals, not just for the best stop, but for the other people hanging around selling their drugs, selling their wares, whatever. And I'm hoping that with these two ordinances, moving to best stops will stop the loitering around both the Bank of America and the, uh, I think it's TD Bank on the corner at Broad Street and East State Street. And Dunkin' Donuts and Crown Fish.
Uh, excuse me. There's only one person speaking at this time.
I'm sorry, that's a friend of mine in the room with me. I told her to be quiet. Um, yeah, the, uh, I would like to know, are we actually going to approve the resolution? I happened to have stepped out of the room for the, uh, I'm trying to look at the number up, referencing, um, the, uh, young lady purchasing the property on Clinton Avenue. I think her name is, um, Lord, off the top of my head, I can't think of it.
It's, it's been approved, ma'am.
Thank you. As I said, I stepped out. I am so glad. Thank you very much, and I am through.
Thank you. The next person, Mr., uh, is it Matthew Kutch?
Yes, thank you, Madam President and, uh, fellow council members. My name is Matthew Kutch. I am the CEO of Woflow, uh, a Trenton-based medical cannabis company that was awarded a medical cannabis dispensary license by the state this past December to operate in Trenton. Uh, Woflow is made up of Trenton locals, highly experienced professionals in the cannabis industry and other regulated industry, as well as medical professionals who believe cannabis is medicine. The state has approved our location, which we chose based upon the ordinance you passed. Uh, the state has also opposed, imposed a timeline on when we must open, as well as necessary steps until opening. One of those steps is this month, we have to obtain Trenton's approval to open, uh, via the CRC and the state, um, and obviously the Cannabis Advisory Committee. Our journey began five years ago when we developed a team and plan that we believed helped the community and patients in the greater Trenton area the most. Our team put together meal drives where thousands of meals were served to Trenton seniors and economically disadvantaged. We worked with the NIA and citywide cleanups. We worked with local doctors on education classes and seminars, and we also worked with groups such as Children's Future, Trenton Police, and Black Cannabis on different efforts to help improve the city. Our team actually was grown and formed in the public library and Starbucks downtown, and we seek to continue to hire a local diverse workforce. Uh, Woflow is delighted to also have an agreement with CWA Labor Union. We are here to dispel any myths or misinformation of what medical cannabis dispensaries look like and do, and show you we are the best fit team to do the job. We come before you today to introduce ourselves, a new Trenton business sanctioned by the state with the award of a medical dispensary license, with a location that complies with all of your past ordinance. We are looking forward to all the appropriate reviews by City Council and the City, uh, Advisory Committee, and with complete transparency, prepared to answer any of your questions. And we would love to have all of the City Council, or you know, anybody involved invited out to our facility so you can get to see and meet our team. And we do urge, you know, council, uh, to be able to elect those members so we can, uh, do everything to get started in the city. Thank you very much.
You want this one so you can read better?
Next person is Michael Renaldo. Council President, the next person in queue is Michael Renaldo.
Right, but Mrs. Pearson needs to, um, mute herself. Ms. Pearson? Okay, she did. Go right ahead, Mr. Renaldo.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, I just wanted to make a short comment to thank Ms. Rodriguez for filling in the clerk's office this evening. Um, let her know she did a fine job and that she's appreciated. Thank you very much. Good night.
Next, Mr. Rivera?
It's Vanessa Sullivan?
It's the, Ms. Vanessa Sullivan?
Hello, yes.
You have the floor.
Can you hear me? Hi, yes, my name is Vanessa Sullivan. My name is Vanessa Sullivan, and I'm on here tonight about the redevelopment project that passed for me and my family. And I would like to say a special thank you to Ms. Julie Murray from the City of Trenton for all her hard work, for coming out to the hood, to my neighborhood, and hearing the people's concerns and the people that want to be homeowners. I would like to give a special thank you to the mayor of the City of Trenton and all his staff for all the hard work and dedication that they put in to make such a great program that could really change our city, and I'm, I'm so proud of that tonight. And I would like to thank all the City Council members that voted for it, and even the ones that didn't. I, I, I love you all, thank you so much. And my job now is to show you what we're gonna do with this. It's so powerful for our people. And everybody that's interested in our program, come now. Now is the time. Don't be afraid. If you want to be a homeowner, now is the time. Thank you so much to everyone, to my family, for my children, my three children, Talia, Shemal, Tatiana, to my mother, I'm gonna be her neighbor now, we're gonna be neighbors, and to all my family, my friends, everybody, every program that helped along the way to get me to where I'm at is not over yet, and there's so much work that still need to be done. There's so much work that needs to be done in our city, and now is the time. And I hope that the people see this and they hear this and they get motivated, and just this is the beginning, nothing's really happening. When things start happening, when we get to ten, twenty, a hundred houses, then we really gonna make a story. But right now, it's just the beginning. And thank you so much to everyone that was involved. Good night.
Next, Mr. Rivera?
You have Phil Charles, Council President?
Mr. Charles? Go right ahead.
Hello, Council, good, good evening. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, Council. Um, my name is Phil Charles, resident of thirty-two Elmhurst Avenue in Trenton, New Jersey. And I'm also, uh, part owner of the Woflow dispensary that is coming to town. And, um, not to just echo on, um, what my business partner Matt mentioned, um, but, you know, we are here to integrate within our community. I'm a lifelong resident of Trenton, um, family's been here for years. I've been a resident, um, almost for the last twenty years. And our main goal is trying to provide and give opportunity to the city, whether it's through jobs, whether it's through funding, not only just like employment, you know, we're looking for executives that can fill positions within this dispensary, you know, and obviously, a lot of, all of us may even know there's several, um, illicit cannabis dispensaries currently operating within the city. What we're trying to do is bring, uh, a licensed business from the state level that's willing to give back in the tax revenues, whether it goes to the schools, whether it goes to roads, um, whatever council seats fit, you know, so, um, I haven't been able to have one-on-ones with council, but, you know, our doors are open. We would love to do a walkthrough of our building, let you guys know more of our plans. Um, I heard, uh, Ms. Vaughn mentioned earlier that she needs a little bit more information. Um, if there's information that you're looking for, we do have lots of information that we will love to provide. And not only for us, but future cannabis applicants within the city, you know, we're not just trying to monopolize here. We want to help other entrepreneurs be able to develop, you know, so. Um, we see this as a great opportunity to put on for the city that, um, put on for us, pretty much. And, one thing, my name is Phil Charles. Um, I could be reached, um, I'm downtown at thirteen West Front Street, um, as a business. And, you know, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Next, Mr. Rivera?
Next, you have Mr. Jacques Howard, Council President.
Go right ahead, Mr. Howard.
I'm Council President and, uh, all of our elected officials. My name is Jacques Howard. I reside at seven fifty-five Franklin Street in the South Ward. I am also a member of the Trenton two fifty Master Plan, a South Ward team, as well as, uh, someone who's called upon oftentimes, uh, from the city, uh, as well as many nonprofits to participate in various activities, as well as a media professional. I'm also part of the Woflow team, as well as Black Cannabis. And I've been taking, uh, to the airwaves to talk about my personal experiences with medical marijuana and advocating as a patient. I'm utilizing my platforms not only to share about my personal experiences, but to highlight, um, the wonderful talent and the opportunity that my hometown, the City of Trenton, has in taking this cannabis opportunity in this industry to address so many ills, and many of those ills are relative to, uh, things that we have the ability to fix with moving along with, um, cannabis businesses, et cetera. So I am also open and available to talk to council members one-on-one or as a group to share my personal experiences with medical marijuana and advocating for this, as well as being a part of the Woflow team, is the Black Cannabis team, and the work that we're trying to do to highlight and to bring people to the City of Trenton. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Rivera?
Next, Council President, we have Ms. Sherri Garette.
Go right ahead, Ms. Garette.
Thank you, Council President, um, McBride and the council body. Um, just a few things. Uh, great session tonight. I mean, um, the council body, uh, most of you, um, really drilled down on this and I guess had some time to really look over these, um, resolutions, uh, fairly with the, the, uh, time allotted. I just wanted to inform, uh, the, um, the, uh, council, um, and, uh, the, uh, the, uh, public. Uh, Ewing Township, um, I was, uh, in a bathroom in Ewing Township, uh, facility, and I, you know, I flushed the toilet, I was using the bathroom, excuse me, I flushed the toilet, I was like, oh god, here we go. And when it, when I flushed the toilet, I still had the same color in it, some yellowish, light brownish color. So I went to the owner and asked, inquired, why, what's going on with the bathroom? Because the bathroom and the sink had, uh, discolored water. So I was informed that, um, well, that you, you know, the water from Trenton Water Works for the last two weeks has been discolored. So I'm not sure if, uh, Trenton, uh, Mr. Lavenberg or, uh, the business, um, administrator had informed the council that, uh, we're having water issues. I know, I live in Trenton, like all of us, uh, mo- most of us on this call, and, um, the council body, and I'm not sure if you're aware that there's a problem with the water, because it's, I, I haven't seen that in Trenton. I, you know, and I was also informed that Hamilton Township received letters from Trenton Water Work about, uh, the water issue, that you can't drink it, whatever. Um, so, um, I don't know, um, you know, Mr. Lavenberg, when he spoke earlier, he didn't address it. I also want to make a point to, um, because we've been around this hashing this out as well in regards to these four bins that's sitting on Prospect Street and dealing with the vows, and Mr. Lavenberg stating that, um, it's gonna lack twenty-five percent in pumping capacity, because that was the whole, um, concept about these bins and disconnecting the reservoir. And, um, now I'm hearing, you know, he spoke and he stated, well, if we can't resolve this problem, we're gonna have to buy water at a higher rate, higher price from American Water Works. So here we go again with American Water Works in the picture. Okay, and again, if we, if we, if we consume a certain amount of, um, water from the Delaware, we will have to pay. So I don't know if American Waters are controlling that, or if it's the, uh, the, uh, Delaware Water Authority, uh, Canal Authority. I'm not really sure of that. I gotta go back, because it's been a minute since I researched that. So my point is, as I stated, uh, uh, last year and the year before that, we need to halt, I, I suggested that, you know, we need to kind of like halt our brakes on this, because stuff is going on over there at Trenton Water Works, these concepts coming out- stuff is going on over there at Trent Water Works, these concepts coming out of D E P about what we need to do, and it's not working. And we're being sued. And then on top of that, I'm hearing that we are hiring council, trying to, uh, hire council to continue with the litigation with the different, the, 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 the rate, uh, payers or, uh, at a different, uh, uh, municipality, Hamilton and, um, Ewing and, and possibly Lawrence, and we still having issues. So to me, it's giving them more, you know, more ammunition. What's going on with the water? Why is the water discolored? And it's been like that for two weeks. And was the council been, uh, made aware of it? Um, what else I wanted to say? In regards to twenty-two oh ninety, the resolution for, uh, Anthony Conti for twenty hours a week for five thousand dollars a month. First, I said, okay, five thousand dollars a month, all right. We, when you add that up full-time, well, what Mr. Conti bringing to the table? Can he remember any of this stuff? Does he remember how to run a, a, the clerk's office? I mean, will he be effective? I mean, this is a lot of money. We're paying somebody to fill in for twenty hours a week. You know, we have an issue, we have a crisis and people are, I mean, he's not, I mean, what the heck? This man better be, be on his toes and, uh, represent at a level that's satisfactory, uh, and, and be able to give the council the support it needs in the city it needs for five thousand dollars a month. Because that's, 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 that's shaking us down. Kind of mess is that? And I hope it's not a conflict of interest, because I'm not sure if Anthony Conti is part of the election for the redistricting. I'm not sure if he was part of that, or, or he's part of the state, uh, redevelopment organization under New Jersey Economic Development Authority. He's something I just, he's a part of. So I hope this is not gonna be a conflict of interest and I hope this is not gonna be, uh, and if, and if the mayor's not having an issue with it, then I, I just a little concerned about Mr. Conti. I just think, I just hope he can do his job and not cause war conflicts, especially with this upcoming election, especially if Mr. Colin is gonna be out in December, which I hope he is not, that, you know, he's able to return and that we clear him in this investigation in regards to, uh, these allegations, or he will be cleared, hopefully. Um, in regards to Isles, um, Councilwoman Vaughn was talking about, yeah, what's the status on this thing? Because we gave them a, a, over a million dollars, uh, uh, contract to provide mental health within the city, uh, uh, what's the status? What's the performance? Are, are, are people going or, or being seen or, you know, what's the setup? I haven't heard nothing. All I know is we passed a million dollars and I ain't heard crap. You know, I haven't heard anybody saying they got mental health from anybody or seeing anyone. So where are we at? Can, you know, uh, the health director, uh, uh, kind of give us a status where they are? Because we paying them a lot of money and I ain't heard nobody and, uh, uh, and the city getting counsel, you know, or, or, or who have stated they, they have a problem with like counseling, you know? Where do we send people? Who do they call? Do they call the Isles office or they call, uh, the Health Department? You know, who do they call? They, what, uh, 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 mental health counseling? I mean, tell the public something. Uh, and I think that is, oh, yeah, one last thing. No one at the city's answering the phone. They're not even answered, they're not even answering emails. Like, what's going on there? What's happening? You know, people coming to me and saying, you know, I've been waiting for a, um, handicap, uh, uh, section in front of their house. They submitted the paperwork last year, a year ago. They've been calling or they got, uh, even, uh, employees saying they got issues calling H R. Nobody's answering the phone. Uh, what's, what's the heck is going on? Uh, what's going on? What's happening? Could the administration tell us what's going on? I thought by now, everyone would not be working remotely, they would be in the office. What's happening? People are wondering what's going on. They put in applications for speed bumps and they haven't heard anything. They saying speed bumps are put somewhere else where there's not much traffic. People are complaining. They're not being, not getting the services that, uh, are being offered um, under this budget that we spent a whole heck of a lot of money, that we don't see what's happening. What's going on? Could somebody explain that? Thank you.
Next person, Mr. Rivera.
Council President, next we have Mr. Leo Bridgewater.
Go right ahead, Mr. Bridgewater.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Council President McBride. Uh, good evening to the rest of the, uh, Trenton City Council. Um, I would like to say, um, I'm just here to express my disappointment and bewilderment when it came, when it comes to the, uh, tabling of the, uh, resolution uh, for the cannabis, uh, the C A C for Trenton. Um, we started on this endeavor back in August, I believe, to get cannabis businesses, uh, to be allowed to run in the city. Um, and I have, I, I offered up, uh, myself and my expertise back then. I've offered myself and my expertise to this council, to this city council and its predecessors for years now. And so, I was, I'm, I'm just kind of, I, 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 I will say that, um, I feel like there are things that are afoot. Um, and the fact that I have not been, um, talked to, uh, by anyone on the city council uh, is something that I find to be a bit, uh, interesting. Um, because, uh, how are you being advised and who is advising you? Um, and whoever is advising you on cannabis is failing you. Um, and, um, I just would like for you all to, uh, seriously, uh, get the ball moving. Um, we need not just this one business, we need multiple businesses in the city. Um, and I would also like the city, the city council to consider, uh, what is it doing for social equity applicants, uh, in the, in the city to get those licenses? Because other municipalities such as Bayonne have, uh, have things in place that cancel out whatever social equity, uh, benefits the state has already laid out. Um, if you haven't already, my first suggestion would be to take a look at the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission's, uh, homepage. Navigate that page and get yourself familiar with it. Um, I believe that maybe some of the problems, some of the questions that some of you may have, uh, could be answered just by simply navigating this New Jersey State Agency's, uh, webpage. Uh, with that, I'll take my leave and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Rivera.
Council President, we do not have any other hands raised.
Seeing no other hands, I move to close public comment.
Wait, we just had another one, Trent Business just raised their hand, Council President. And Ms. Mary Horn following her.
Go right ahead. Mr. Rivera.
Can I go ahead, Mr. Rivera or Ms. McBride?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Okay, thanks. Um, I wanted to, um, thank Mr. Bridgewater, uh, for pointing out some of the issues with, um, business and bringing business into Trenton.
Put your name on, put your name on the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Chowdhury. I have a property on Greenwood. Okay. Um, I wanted to thank Mr. Bridgewater for bringing up issues about bringing business into Trenton. Um, I think that the issues with business, housing, um, and crime are, are so intricately intertwined and, uh, it's hard to address one of them without just, uh, addressing all of them, you know? And of course, policy issues, you know, and what policies are implemented and discussed and, you know, considered. Um, so, um, I think that it's very hard to attract businesses to Trenton w-with some of our issues, particularly with crime. Um, and that's my, you know, and from there, we need to continue to look for, um, fair policing practices and transparent policing. So I wanted to encourage people to support, uh, civilian review boards here in Trenton. Um, states like New York have had them for decades, but somehow we do not have strong ones here, largely due to police unions, um, and other lobbyist groups that seek unfair protections. Um, policing is the one practice which has literally virtually no professional oversight. Um, and whatever little professional oversight comes from the inside, which is problematic to begin. Um, and as you know, you know, less than like six percent of police complaints ever, uh, are, are sustained. Um, so we need to get, we need to get cooperation and accountable and transparent policing, um, you know, to start happening in Trenton. Um, so to this end, you know, please support the C C R B, which changed its, uh, bill number. Um, I would suggest that we look at pensions. Um, certain areas have, um, decided to take police lawsuits out of sort of the taxpayers' payrolls and, um, and start putting them onto police pensions. You know, police have some of the largest pensions around. Um, I feel like the police are able to handle their own lawsuits so that Trent taxpayers aren't hit with the kind of, the, the double-edged sword of now you don't have adequate policing, you don't have just policing, you don't always have fair policing, you get overpoliced, you have police overreach, and then you also have to pay for the police lawsuits. It, it strikes me as fundamentally unfair, um, and just, just utterly illogical and undemocratic and un-American. Um, so I would suggest that. I would, um, also, uh, I would like to, um, you know, encourage people to support ending qualified immunity. Um, and I would ask police, uh, I know there's some police on the call tonight. Um, please put a link to how to fill out an Oprah request on your site. Um, there is information about getting a complaint filled out now, but, um, a lot of people don't understand how to do an Oprah request. And everyone has a right to, um, open public records. Um, that's the Open Public Records Act. And people should know about that. People should know what venues of, of, you know, you know, basically recompensation or fairness that they have. And I don't think enough people know about that. So I would ask them to please publish, um, links to the Oprah, uh, request site, because there are multiple methods of getting it. It can be a little confusing. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention was traffic issues. Um, since there was that discussion about the speed limits on Greenwood, right in front of the school, the high school, um, we've had a couple of accidents. One, I understand, was almost fatal. I didn't hear about the end of it because of privacy issues. Um, and then we had another hit and run on the other side of the street. Um, I counted and there's only like one speed limit sign on Greenwood. And as you know, Greenwood is still listed as a, uh, I think it's Chambers and Greenwood actually, because I saw a truck route sign listed, uh, sign right in front of the hi-high school. Like, we should not be having truck routes in front of a school, in front of a high school. That's just on, really, really hard to understand. Um, a truck, the trucks do not need to go down these major streets. Um, there are plenty of other streets that these trucks can go down, um, so that they are not literally in front of a school that has over a thousand students. Um, and we need more traffic signs and I would, I would like to see a speed bump. Um, and the traffic, and the, I've called streets departments about this and not gotten a call back. As, as, um, I think Ms. Garette mentioned, there's no response from the streets department. There's no response to emails. There's no response to phone calls. We also need some, um, cans out there so we can deal with the litter issues. Um, and I also haven't gotten a response about that. And the last thing I just wanted to mention was housing. I think where Trenton is in its housing cycle, um, our build, the, a lot of the buildings in Trenton were built about a hundred years ago, um, at the height of the, you know, manufacturing. Well, I guess now it'd be about a hundred and fifteen years ago. Um, these buildings seem to be, you know, I think this is just where Trent buildings are in their life cycle. Like, these buildings are literally falling down. Um, so I would just like to see a more proactive approach. Um, if, if Trenton doesn't start maintaining these buildings, I think these problems are gonna come at a faster rate. You know, and you're gonna see more buildings that are propped up by two-by-fours. Um, you know, like, like, uh, like our, um, uh, Manuel mentioned. Like, you're gonna see more and more of this, and I feel like I've already seen more of this. So I feel like we need to be very, look at it as the urgent need it is. These buildings cannot just sustain on their own. They're, they're beginning to reach a point that they have to be fortified. Um, you know, and, and brought up to fire code too, by the way. Trenton buildings were grandfathered in, and as you know, there've been some tragic incidents and accidents. Um, I don't understand why, especially since we have a grant now, which is centered on being safe, why can't some of that grant money be put into putting fire escapes? You know, there, there, there are no fire escapes or not, there are minimal number of fire escapes in Trenton. And, you know, that, that's gonna lead to like dangerous situations that has already had. So I, I would also like to see our housing become, you know, uh, bring housing up to code, you know? People, people need to be able to get out of their buildings should something happen, and particularly, you know, Trent buildings are built slats. So like buildings in some other, you know, um, industrial era cities, you know, these buildings are very flammable, for lack of a better term. Um, so I really feel like we need to address this. And that's it. Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Mary Horn, Council President.
Go right ahead, Ms. Horn.
Yes, thank you. Uh, great council meeting tonight. I'll be brief. I would just like to say, uh, and for everyone to be mindful that Trentonians are the owners of Trenton Water Works. And when we start talking about American Water and these other companies, we are the owners here. So, uh, just be mindful that, uh, we have to remember that. Uh, we shouldn't be worried about these other companies coming in. I mean, we went to the assembly with it and there has been meetings about it, uh, early on, several years ago. So just be mindful that we are the owners. We can make decisions about our water works, just as we did in twenty-ten. And number two, just let's keep the focus on our lead line replacements. That's a must for our drinking water and for our schools and for the whole city. Thank you. That's all I have. Good night.
Good night. Next, Mr. Rivera.
Um, Council President, currently there are no more hands raised.
Alrighty, and, um, I'm gonna move, make a motion to close public comment. Second. Um, Ms. Ro, uh, Ms. Rodriguez, if you would call the role. Ms. Rodriguez.
I'm sorry, I have muted myself. Motion, um, to close public comment. Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Yes.
Councilman Harrison.
Yes.
Councilman George Michelle.
Yes.
Councilman Santiago Rodriguez.
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Vaughn.
Yes.
The next thing on the docket is, um, civic matters.
Please comment, um, Councilwoman Caldwell Wilson.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Um, first of all, I, I, I want to thank Lordis for stepping up to the plate. You did a great job tonight. And I, I, I do want the public to know that the council president has worked diligently for the past two weeks, making a minimum of forty phone calls, trying to find some temporary clerk for the clerk's office. It was almost an impossible task, but then the, uh, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Kaloge, and our law director worked with the council president, and we were able to get Lordis in there to, to run our meetings. And Mr. Conti was willing to step up to the plate. And I believe it was checked that there's no conflict as to what he's doing. He just, he's not the clerk. He can't be the clerk. But he will help us, and I appreciate the council people for moving that forward so that it gives us breathing space to reach out and try and find, uh, if Mr. Conlon goes, a replacement for Mr. Conlon. But Mr. Conlon is on leave at this time, so we cannot replace him and we cannot assign a permanent clerk. So thank you, Lordis and, um, Mr. Mr., uh, Conti for stepping up to the plate to help the city of Trenton. And hopefully, we will be able to move forward. And I want to thank our employees in the office. They have stepped up to the plate and they have been absolutely amazing. So I just ask the public to be patient with us so that we can move this forward without any fights and any arguments and any criticism, because we're doing the very best that we can. Um, I also have a question for, uh, Mr. Lavenberg, and I, I hope this, um, Chase Street, Mr. Lavenberg, are they doing, um, lead line replacement on Chase Street?
Mr. Lavenberg? Sorry, I've had trouble, um, unmuting my phone. Um, what, what, um, what, where's that street, Council Vice President?
Chase Street.
Hello?
Because I've been.
K C A.
C A S E.
Yeah, uh, well, look, um, I don't, I don't have the, uh, my records right in front, but I- Yeah, well, look, I don't, I don't have the records right in front, but I can certainly see if we have a call out there and let you know first thing tomorrow morning.
No, because I'll tell you why. I've been receiving phone calls all day today.
Okay.
The, the community, I don't think they received any notification that this was going to happen. Cars weren't moved. It's a mess. Nobody expected it. So I need you to find out whether that contractor actually notified the community about this.
Okay, alright. Um, alright, did anybody notice like what it said on the side of the truck, which contractor it was? We have three contractors in the area, so, but I, I can look in and I'll, I'll let you know any work going on in that street.
Yeah, please make sure that these contractors, they have to notify the community. I mean, if there's a notification, because I got that one in no hole.
Okay, this is honestly, this is the first, I've heard of that, it's the first call I had today, so I didn't get any, I didn't get any calls from the community about it, so. Alright, we'll let you know first thing in the, alright, not a problem. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harrison?
Uh, first I would like to say, I kinda agree with the people of the community. We have Cannabis Advisory Committee. I think we should be moving that forward. I thank Lordas tonight, Mr. Conti, but we still have an ongoing concern that what's going on in the clerk's office that needs to be addressed. That needs to be addressed in the near future. I also would like to talk about, this Saturday, citywide smoke detector installation with the Trenton Fire Department, Saturday, March the 5th, 11:00 a.m. Telephone number is 609-989-4000. Like I said, it's a wonderful program to help out people in the city. The Fire Department's gonna go out there. And then the Saturday after that, the 12th, HUGS is with the Fire Department and Clara's Heart. You got the fire station on Perry Street, on Stivison, and the one on Hamilton Avenue. They're gonna be taking in gloves, hats, underwears, socks to give out to the people, the community that need it. So it's a wonderful event. So if you, if you would like to donate, please stop by either the Perry Street Fire Station, the one on Stivison, or the one on Hamilton Avenue, and they have a box there, you could donate stuff. It would be greatly appreciated to help out the community. So again, like I said, we have wonderful events coming up, up the road, but as I said, we should continually work together and help the people. Great city. So thank you very much.
Um, Councilman Michelle?
Yes, just for Lordas, you did a great job. You're coming in. I want to thank you. I know you didn't want to be here to do it, but you did a great job. You know your work. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, I was glad to hear Lordas' voice. She's our deputy clerk. Don't forget that. You have your job. All you have to do is, I hope to see you there permanently. And I, second point is regarding, Mr. Lavenberg mentioned the word, the beloved word, American Water. I have to concur with Ms. Horn. This is a name that I don't want to hear in Trenton because all they are trying to do is buy Water Works. Yes, they did a connection from somewhere else. I don't know who agreed to that connection. So far, City Council wasn't, in the last four years, I never heard a resolution allowing that connection between American Water and Trenton. The reason they have that connection is because they want to take over the water from the Delaware. You know, Mr. Lavenberg knows because he calls back with them with way trim. He knows what American Water means. And from Camden, you know, he knows Detroit, Michigan. So I don't want to hear that word, American Water, anymore in Trenton. Please, we have to be careful about that because they are planning to take over, they already are taking over our management with Mr. Lavenberg and the people he brought in. He is way trim, American Water, these Norcos, Mr. Farmers, you know, they're all in it together and they are after Trenton Water Works. So let's be careful about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Vaughn?
Um, yes, I just wanted to thank Lordas Rodriguez for doing a great job. It's good to see you back in the clerk's office and I do concur with Councilman Rodriguez. We do need a deputy clerk position in the city of Trenton. And, and I do believe that if you was interested in having that role, you would be a, a fine choice. And, and, and we can move forward from there. And I also want to thank Anthony Conti for coming back to Trenton. And I know that he does a lot of work in, in, in the public service space. He does work, he, he is on the Mercer County Board of Elections. And right now, they're also wearing their ward commissioner hat where they're redrawing the district lines. And he knows that also in the city of Trenton, we have concerns about that process. And I don't know how his role here is gonna, as, as the, you know, city clerk contractually, performing some of the city clerk role contractually, is gonna interfere or conflict with his responsibilities on the Mercer County Board of Elections. But nonetheless, I think that this council and the clerk's office, it will continue to progress. We, we hit some bumpy road, but we're no different to any other organization. We have many professionals around us who can help us get back on track and remain on track. So I just want the city to know and, and our business partners and that the city of Trenton is, is, is continuing to operate and we're open for business. The thing that I wanted to talk about is the, the law enforcement, the public safety aspect in the city. The education, the lack of education, the lack of, uh, job training and opportunities. And all those things play a role into, uh, our, our, our public safety, safety and well being. And we all have to really have a serious conversation. I heard Mr. Bridgewater talk about that this council needs to talk about social equity. Well, we all need to talk about social equity and equality. We all know that there's implicit bias at every level, in every space of, of our society. We have our issues with our parks being shut down in a community that needs park, I mean, we need the parks for our, our health. We have been deemed an inner city with issues, with underlying issues, health issues that no other community experienced. So our parks are very important, but yet they're closed because of some people perceive certain people of social economic levels and, and education levels don't belong in Cow wood Park. And if they are in there, they must be doing something unlawful because of the way they look. That's implicit bias. And it has to be removed from our side, society. When we see it, we should stump it out. We see it across, uh, the city hall. Certain people gain access to certain programs. Some people get access to grant monies, business opportunities, and others don't. For all the reasons of, uh, uh, just related to discrimination, racism, implicit, implicit bias. And one of the things that came up a few weeks back, it was a photo of our police department recruit, recruits. The academy graduated a class. That class did not look like the community of Trenton. It was not diverse at all. And at the end of the day, social scientists throughout this country and the world has, 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 has taught us that policing, police officers, law enforcement officers, they should look like the community that they serve. They should look like the community that they police. And we as Trentonians, no matter what ethnic group we come from, whatever race we represent, that should have been, and that, that's a, a red flag. And it should be deemed unacceptable. If you care about your neighbor and you see something like that, those are the things that you should be discussing. Those are the things that matter. Start talking about the issues that matter in the community. And I don't see that coming from anybody. You talk about things that, 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 that don't move the city forward. You know, you, you, you talk, you don't talk about, Mr. Bridgewater says, oh, well, you know, he has his marijuana business. And he says, oh, the council should talk about social equity. Well, I want to see your, your business partner, partners talk about social equity. Do something about it. Hire some of those men who, and women who come, who have had marijuana charges and can't get a job anywhere else. Hire them in your business. Talk to your friends at the state house, all the way up to the governor's office. When is Murphy going to pardon those individuals who are still sitting in prison right now in jail? Going time for, for that, for, for the product that you are about to make a profit on, Mr. Bridgewater? So you should do your role too. We all should. So, so there's a lot of issues that still have to be resolved that are still on the table. But the main one that has been on the table since the beginning of time is, is the, is the inequity and inequality that's applied to black and brown people. So in our city, it's the majority of black and brown people. So we need to start providing opportunities for those individuals. And we have to start, you know, giving them opportunities and, and, in, in Trenton Water Works, Public Works Department across the city. And, and stop giving opportunities to folks outside the city who don't live here and, 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 and will not circulate our taxpayer dollars back into the city. So the lot, but, but I, you know, I'm here and I, and I recognize those issues and I'm gonna continue to talk about them. And a lot, a lot of folks don't want to talk about them. They want to turn a blind eye to them, but I will be here making sure that they're talked about. And, and, and we gotta get that park open. And we gotta start following the laws and ordinance of the city. It's brought to my attention that some of our prime real estate, our historic buildings and landmarks are, are, are not following our zoning ordinances. And no one is saying anything because that's their, those are their friends, right? Those are the people they support. But I assure you, continue down that road and the majority of population, you may be the loudest voice, but the majority will see, foresee fit that you will not prevail. So, and Council President, and that's all I'm gonna say tonight, but I thank everybody for coming out and continuing to support the council. And just continue to support your city and your, and your neighbors. And, and continue to reach out to any of us on this council to help move any issue you, 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 you need to be addressed in your neighborhood, on your street, like those potholes. And hopefully, the road inspector, whoever that is, and we never get to Public Works Department, but we gotta talk to Mr. Onatary about the roads and the inspector and, and how, how, how his department, what plans he has in place and, and are they effective? Uh, thank you, Council President, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilkins?
Yes, good evening. First, I'd like to say thank you so much, Lordas. Thank you so much for stepping up. You did an excellent job. You've been in the clerk's office for quite some time and you really, really did a great job. Also, I wanted to address Ms. Sullivan. I wanted to say congratulations to you, Ms. Sullivan. My, my wish for you is that you also look into any other resources to assist you, you know, that you may be eligible for while you build your dream home. But again, I wish you all the best. And lastly, I wanted to talk briefly about the lead line replacement. There were gentlemen on Southern Street and on, I can't remember, the other street. And I had actually asked questions with regard to the lead line replacement program itself. From my understanding, the lead line replacement is, is due to expire on April the 2nd. I'm sorry, April 2022. I apologize, not April 2nd, April 2022. I just wanted that confirmed, that is true. And there are still a lot of Trentonians, there are a lot of homeowners who are unaware that it is expiring and how to actually contact the, I guess, the liaison, whoever the city's liaison is for the lead line replacement program. And I would like to see that addressed because if it is due to expire in April, that's next month. And from my understanding, whatever homes have not been addressed with regard to the lead line replacement are just not going to be addressed. I'm not 100% sure, Mr. Cruz, or, uh, if you can find out, you know, what the expiration would be. Also, I just want to thank all of the residents, constituents that are on the call tonight. Thank you for your civic engagement. Continue to be on the line, continue to attend the meetings to find out what's going on in the city. Continue to be engaged. It's very important that we do. Homeowners, renters, people who, who live here, people who, there are some people who wish to move here, but continue to be engaged on what's going on in the city. It is very, very important. This is a very important time coming up. It is, you know, election year. And for people just to be mindful of decisions that they're making and along with the decisions that we make, but just continue to be engaged. And Council President, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. I would first like to thank everyone for coming out. Your opinion matters. I have to just repeat what most of my council members had stated earlier, thanking Lordas. Lordas have helped us out and we appreciate you dearly for doing so. And I would like to give a shout out to the employees in the clerk's office. They have stepped up and really, really put forth serious effort to get the work pushed out of the clerk's office in the absence of the clerk. And I want them to know that I appreciate them. And I also would like to thank Mr. Conti for agreeing to come on board. Mr. Conti comes with a lot of expertise and I, I believe that he will help us move the clerk's office along where it should be at and be very productive in doing so. And I want to thank Mr. Koloji. Over the last two weeks since February 15th, Mr. Koloji has taken weekend calls from me Sunday. He has just been available to basically get us to the point that Mr. Conti is here today during the meeting. He was still on the line with DCA trying to make sure that the waivers were right. And I just want Mr. Koloji to know that I know it's your job, but I appreciate you taking the weekend calls. You've helped me out tremendously and I appreciate it. And for, and for the, for Mr. Bridges and Mr. Cruz and his assistant, John Siegel, John Siegel have just been so good to me. He looked out for. John Siegel have just been so good to me. Um he looked out for me. It almost caused me to get my head chopped off by my councilwoman over there from the West Ward, but he was doing me a favor, and he has helped me out tremendously getting the docket out. Um Mr. Cleveland, um uh he was gonna do it, and um he was on lunch, and Mr. Siegel just stepped in and said, Councilwoman, I'll help you out. I appreciate that. Um Councilwoman Vaughn, he was just looking out for me. I want you to know that. And um I just appreciate everyone that has stepped up since February the fifteenth and looked out for us and helped us on um get this much closer to resolving issues in the clerk's office. And um we will be having um our investigation. We will be talking about that at the next meeting, giving the public a complete uh breakdown of what we're going to be doing. Um but we had to get the clerk's office straightened out first. And um again, um I wanted to offer my condolences to uh to the families that lost their loved ones over the last couple of days. My heart goes out to them. There's nothing that I could say to you right now that will ease your pain, but just know that you're in my thoughts and my prayers. And um I do understand what you're going through, and no one, no one could say anything right now to make you feel better. What we need to do as council members is to make sure that our police department uh step up uh their game, make sure they utilize that crime center. And let's try to be more proactive than reactive, and just try to minimize some of the guns that are plaguing our community. Um we are about to go into the spring. We all know what happens. I would like to see some type of plan put forth. I would like to see the streets in Trenton lit up like a Christmas tree, so that every street that you go down, you could see through uh see at night. We have a serious problem on Stuyvesant Avenue. The trees, they meet together, and it is so dark down Stuyvesant Avenue. Even the residents refuse to come out in the evening. We need to light those areas up. We need to light Trenton up. That is one of my biggest concerns, that even if you have the cameras up, if you don't have the lighting, the cameras does not give you a good visual. So if we could step that up and start lighting up our city, I think that um that's a a start in the right direction, because we pay P S E N G a lot of money. And there's no reason why the the lights in front of the city hall are out, the lights on Stuyvesant and most of the side streets. We need to light our streets up. We need to get prepared for these hot summer days that are coming. We need to do it now. I hope the police director is on the line. I hope they begin to utilize that crime center as it was put in place for us to do. We cannot continuously be reactive. We cannot. We must be proactive. Again, I want to thank all the directors for coming out. Um thank each and every one of you. The next council meeting is March the fifteenth um and seventeenth, and hope to see you there. If you have any questions, you all have my personal number. You all have our um our work numbers. Give us a call. Thank you so much. Um Lordas, I would like to make a motion.
Council President, Council President, before we close the meeting, I had one quick thing I needed to say was, I've been getting constant reports about serious drug activity at the one hundred block of Franklin Avenue. And I believe I um sent Councilman Harrison a woman's phone number to call her. Um and it's just getting worse, and there's been no police down there checking it out. Thank you.
Thank you. So Lordas, I would like to make a motion to close, no, no, no. I would like to make a motion to close this meeting. Um is someone would second it?
Second.
Alrighty, um all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Seeing no nays, um this meeting is officially closed. Mr. Rivera, if you could please um shut the lines down, I'd appreciate it.